Need to order? Call the roll. Barker?
Here.
McCain? Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Here.
Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Now it's time for public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? Format for our board is that everyone is given three minutes to address the board.
Try my best. A little over 20 years ago, this college experienced change, but that change was motivated by desire to make the college stronger and better, and in time led to our being recognized as one of the top 150 community colleges in the nation. In contrast, recent changes seem motivated by a desire to dismantle what has been achieved, to diminish the college for the sake of a smaller general tax rate for those not interested in the value of education. Let's distinguish these two motivations. Current motivation is wedded to cost. It asks, how much does all this education cost us taxpayers? It believes that it can get it all on the cheap because it is believed that the people who work here do not deserve good salaries and worthy benefits. On the other hand, the past motivation was to reward people for what they do with a fundamental belief that employees earned it. The human factor here was the belief that people deserve their pay at whatever level they serve the institution because they earned it by their talents, their character, and their effort, their contribution. Viewing people only as cost centers on a balance sheet deliberately diminishes their value to the institution. To illustrate, consider my case. I recently was asked to write a recommendation for a student to law school. He asked me because, quote, "I had made a difference in his life," unquote, his words. He finished his undergraduate studies at SIUE, but he asked me, a mere community college professor, to write on his behalf. I did so, as I have done for many students over my career. I received an email from a member of admissions committee who applauded my letter and informed me he was going to recommend this student. I learned later from the student that he was offered a full scholarship to study law. In this one instance, I believe I earned my pay for the entire year. This because what I did for this student was beyond just teaching and learning. What future good will come from this person's progress in the world is not exclusively measurable in terms of costs and money. What I'm paid now is more than offset by what this individual will achieve and how he will benefit society. Now, I tell this to share with you and to show my pride in my work, but my point is not about me. It's about this faculty. We all have these meaningful successes, and so multiply this example 100-fold. Can a specific cost be placed on this? Our faculty association president, Debbie Witzkin, has spoken to the board, updating them on meaningful activities of the faculty. These are very visible things. My help with this student would remain invisible had I not shared it now. So I invite other faculty to come before the board and share meaningful successes with students that otherwise go unrecognized. I know they exist, and I know we all earn our salary because of our singular commitment to education. It's not all about costs in our mind. We work for our students in ways that are not captured on a balance sheet. If we faculty were lawyers, our billable hours would far exceed what we are actually paid. Reflect on this fact as you go forward with your changes. Thanks.
Okay, if there are no other comments, Dr. Traska?
Yes. So I'll read the statement we put together. So budget health update. With the transfer of working cash interest to the operating funds, the balance in our operating funds revenue accounts at the end of April is $26,85,468. This is a healthy balance, and it is appropriate as we are looking at needed investments in technology and the college. So we are well within our revenue versus expenses ratio, doing a really good job. As of the end of April, we have received $849,137,063 more in corporate personal property replacement tax funds than we anticipated in our budget process. With careful spending, we are on track to be within our spending budget in our operating funds. We are anticipating seeing significant savings in salaries and benefits due to retirements, and at the time, it has taken to fill vacated positions. We are currently working on our budget for fiscal year '23, and it will be brought to the board during our June regularly scheduled meeting. So things are moving in the right direction, and again, I want to applaud the team for being vigilant and mindful of their budgets this last year as we move forward. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Can you clarify why we received, what is the number with 63 cents on the end?
That was the corporate personal property replacement tax, and yes. And I might have Mary come up. I actually asked Mary that question, too. So Mary, could you respond to that? You can do it more eloquently than I can, so thank you. That's the CPRRT.
Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax.
Replacement Tax, yes.
CPPRT. And that is a tax that we receive. It goes back to a change in the Constitution in 1970 when we could no longer assess personal property taxes against the corporations. That is an amount that varies year to year. We actually pushed our budget up higher because we've been running above budget for the last several years, but apparently we still didn't go high enough. From what I am told, there is no firm way to estimate that. It's really dependent upon the corporations. They pay a 2.5% replacement tax on their net income. Partnerships pay another rate. Utilities pay another rate. And when we receive those payments depends on.
Does that help? Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
I just wondered. I don't know any way how you could know, just based on history. Yeah.
Dr. Adams?
My next.
You're trying to be more aggressive in that and plan for more, but as soon as we fall short, we're going to do a term.
Somebody needs to mute.
Thank you, Mary.
Everyone. So you received an enrollment report, and so I don't know how in-depth you want me to go with that since you have the numbers in front of you. But for summer, we are down slightly. For fall, we are trending up. Some significant things that we're seeing in the data is a large increase for headcount and credit hours at N.O. Nelson. We believe that is in part because of a partnership with Academic Affairs to bring some more programming there. And online is through the roof for fall. And again, I think that's just the good work of Academic Affairs, really working to look at that curriculum and make it flexible so that it can be provided when it's most convenient for our students. And so I think they're really starting to take advantage of that. Again, enrollment is a partnership across the entire campus. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
So you're including non-credit hours in there?
So if you look at the report I sent you, it's total enrollment, and then we take out non-credit, and then you have the credit number.
Okay. So you look at it as that you're taking it out because it's unpredictable, or I guess...
Right, and we don't want to skew our... We don't get paid on it, per se, in the apportionment. But I wanted you to see, and Dr. T. and I discussed that kind of, we want you to see the big picture and then kind of bring that funnel down for you. In fall term, 301 of the students who are enrolled for fall are students straight from high school. So I do believe the early birds were very effective. We saw about 425, 450 students throughout those, I don't know, 10 or 12 events. And so I think those really paid off for us in getting students registered early. We are working to try to bring early enrollment to our dual-credit program, and so if we can get those enrollment numbers booked, that would help us have a better idea of what we're doing for fall.
Yeah, exactly. And I think the other part, too, Julie, on that is we're trying to define enrollment in a different way, so where you can see non-credit, you can see high school partnership, non-high school partnership. And then we can even begin to drill down.
Right.
Like which districts, which schools. And in fall already, and I know Travis is here, we were talking about this this afternoon, is he's got through the partnership with District 7 and beginning to evolve with Jerseyville, is we'll have students being bused from those high schools to Lewis and Clark, which has really never happened. So rather than those students going elsewhere, I won't say where, but they're now coming to us to engage in programs on our campus. So it's a lot of effort that's been going into sort of reimagining that model and trying to... And part of that, too, is we have, you know, the CECs, we have the liaisons. So we have Edwardsville, we have Jerseyville, et cetera. Those are... The feedback I've gotten directly from superintendents that are typically sort of outside of that are hearing really good things, that we're actually connecting with students who would have not necessarily wanted to go to Lewis and Clark or even were thinking about Lewis and Clark. I would say that that is a variable in what we're seeing in the numbers being better, especially with the dual-credit, so.
And, you know, we're bringing, Dr. Sue is trying to bring CNA to Carlinville?
Carlinville.
Carlinville. That will be concurrent enrollment. It won't be dual-credit, but it'll be concurrent enrollment, and so concurrent enrollment, they pay full tuition. So, I mean, there are other pieces and really trying to focus on the CECs and try to get more programming back out into the community. It's a great place for folks to kind of get their feet wet, test drive us, and then come along for the ride.
I wonder what 2019 would look like as a column on there. I mean, are we still way behind 2019? Because, you know...
I can go back and add that.
We can do that.
Or 20. Am I thinking 20? This is 2020. I don't know.
20 would have been locked down.
Yeah, you would want fiscal year '20, right?
Yes, which was 1920.
Right, which would be 1920. Why not? Let's do it.
Yeah.
I don't want to depress everyone with, you know... But I don't know, you know, last year was kind of an aberration, too, for is our goals low? They were just trying to be better than last year, which was really bad. You know, I don't know. Something to think about.
Right now, in the plan, we're looking at projecting a 10% increase, and that's made up of many different parts and pieces. But if we could get to a 10% plus, a solid 10% plus, we would be thrilled with that.
And in which line? The credit hours?
That would be for...
Or headcount, or what?
For credit students. It would be in headcount. And then what we're seeing is that credit hours, you know, follows pretty closely to that, usually a couple percentage points higher than that. We are seeing students register for more credit hours in this fall than we saw last fall. So I think part of that could be coming out of COVID, right, where the new normal is here, whatever that is.
Yeah.
I think the comment, I forget her name, the young lady today at dinner, who spoke specifically about, essentially she was talking about Blend Flex.
The flexibility.
And being able to take five classes when before she would not have been able to do that. So I, my prediction is that we're going to see more students gravitating toward that model because they have the flexibility to be face-to-face, which some want to do. Perhaps they want to do that from time to time, but to be able to flex.
Right.
And just as that evolves and becomes more viable and we put more resources into it, it's going to become, I think, equally more accessible, so. But I think perfect example tonight of a student saying, "I got to take five classes," which we didn't say, well, would you have taken five classes either way? I might make the assumption she might have said, "No, I may have taken two or three," so, you know.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
I do like this presentation model better. It's much easier to read.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
I like it. It's a good format. I would switch the ears, and I think you did that on a later transmission, but that's just me. It's not, no big deal.
Yeah. I did switch them and put 21 and then 22. We'll go back in and put 19, and then we'll put a percent change column in to represent that as well. Any other questions?
And we also share that with the full campus team, so everyone's aware of where we're at, what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Omnibus Agenda. The Omnibus Agenda is presented for a vote. Is there any item the board would like to be held out and voted separately?
Yes, Chairman, I have four items that I would like to be considered separately. They would be Items K: Bid Information, Item N: Contract Change Orders, Item P: Present Request, and Item Q: Personnel.
K, N, P, and Q, and we'll vote on the rest.
What'd you say? T and Q?
P is in Paul.
Oh.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the Omnibus Agenda with those four items pulled out?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, call and roll. Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon? Hyon? Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Mine is yes. I had trouble unmuted.
Motion approved. Okay. Did you get that, Sue? Okay. All right, motion approved. So let's go through each one of these other items then. Item K, do I have a motion to approve Item K?
Motion.
Second? Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, just, I think this will just be a discussion. The dispersal reports show that our current provider is SBM Maintenance. Is that incorrect, or is it actually ABM? Because I don't see SBM submitting a quote.
Correct. It is the same company. ABM is the parent company. SBM has been bought by ABM. They've been through a couple of name changes since we've contracted with them. I'm sorry, it's Chris Paul that answering. I didn't introduce myself. But yes, it is the same company.
Okay, I thought it probably was, okay. So how did you calculate, how is the three-year cost calculated? I don't quite see that.
So we developed, legal assisted us with developing a form so that we were able to compare apples to apples between each of the bid submissions. So we defined how many personnel are required to properly clean the facilities, and then full-time hours were given by how many days per week and how many weeks per year so that everybody was bidding on the same amount of hours per year in the end. And then their variance would be the labor rate. So whatever they chose to pay the rate for the employee and then an overhead rate on top of that. What came to a bill rate is what it's often referred to.
So is the fixed cost, in the case of ABM, for example, it says fixed cost $60,000. Is that an amount that's added on to the, I guess it's a variable cost of the labor?
The fixed cost, that is, when we had a pre-bid meeting, several of the custodial contractors requested that we pulled that out as a separate line item. Otherwise, the hourly rate would really be high and look really, not look so great. So it's called fixed cost, but it's really consumable. So we're talking about the soap, the paper towels, toilet paper, all of those items that they're going to need to provide throughout the year. And then for ABM, they listed $60,000 as their cost throughout a year, and they do have a good handle on that because obviously they have been servicing our campus for the last several years. So, well, actually, they've probably been with us about 10 years now. It's been a long time. They had two consecutive contracts.
So how does their quote compare with their current cost?
Well, it is about a $250,000-$300,000 difference increase. What's a little difficult at this point is the amount of hours for this bid submission and the hours given. It means that they're going to be fully staffed through the entire year and maintain all those hours. So I don't really see it being that high in the end because then it also calculated overtime rate as well so that we could capture what that amount would be. So I don't see a lot of overtime, and I don't see them being fully staffed. The labor for that industry is really tough, so.
So right now, it's running right at $100,000 per month, and that's a fixed amount, correct?
Yes.
So we can say that for a three-year period, that would be 3.6 if they kept the same rate, which they wouldn't, of course, but...
No.
Did they, or anyone else submit a quote that was a fixed amount per month, a flat amount?
No, we did not ask for a fixed amount.
So with this scenario, we have more control over how many hours they spend and where they spend those hours, whereas right now, we have no control over that. It's because it's just a fixed amount, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose we have some control, but it's not going to affect how much we pay each month.
Sure. So an example would be during the renovation, we wouldn't need the hours spent in that area being renovated, so that would be a way that we wouldn't have as many costs.
They're going to have to justify the hours that they spent, so, I mean...
Yes.
If I were that business, I'd just have people here full-time, nonstop, but you're going to monitor that so that doesn't happen.
Yes.
No further questions?
Okay, end of discussion? All right, call and roll. Wertz?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. We'll move on to Item N: Contract Change Orders, Insurance Renewals, Asset Disposal. Okay, do I have a first, second?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
Just a question. I see that we're... $289,000 is our total additional match required. Is that like, did we have a match required before? And if so, how much more is this match than, and what was, than what was expected?
Chris, you want to handle that one?
Yes. So what happened in this situation is the project went out to bid. The bid results were nearly double what was the estimated budget, which was figured before COVID. Three people submitted bids. They were all within range, 417,000 to 428,000. I did ask CDB if they would consider rebidding just because of the significant increase, and given the environment and the struggles they're having with contractors bidding on projects at all, they felt that this was a fair bid, although unfortunate that it was that much higher. So what is in addition is not only the difference of the bid and the budget, but also the 10% contingency, which they require us to have at all times.
So the original budget was $175,000, $170,500, right? And so now...
And that's construction. That does not, that has taken out, I'm sorry, the engineering firms' fees were taken out of that, so it was higher than that. It was at $200,000.
Okay. But the, but the $317,000 construction bid, that's just for construction. That's not engineering and design, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're looking at well over, well over double on the construction cost. Now, is that, am I correct in saying that the state of Illinois isn't going to pay any of this? Lewis and Clark is stuck for the whole increase, right?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned COVID a while ago. Does this qualify for reimbursement or coverage by COVID money?
Not that I am aware of, unless Mary has a different idea. When I was referring to COVID, I'm sorry if I was confusing, but I refer to that as we are seeing the costs in every project we're approaching, where estimated budgets were created before COVID, and then now that CDB's bidding and awarding these, we're seeing that increase that wasn't factored in originally. So that's what this is a result of.
Are there, is it possible to pursue any alternate engineering and design on this project, since it's, I don't know, is it even possible to consider alternatives?
As far as any other engineering, all of, most of their work is done. Now they're at the part they're going to observe the project being complete. This is where we would be at the stage where this would be awarded to the lowest bidder, and the contract would be negotiated, and then they would start the work once the equipment arrived.
Well, yeah, I'm saying, is there possibly a completely different design that could be considered? It'd be going back to the drawing board on that $30,000 that we've already spent, I guess, but...
Well, the only concern I have with that is that we are already replacing fang-coil units in a restroom that has failed. So we're already having to address situations before this project's even started. So my concern is if we continue to go back and do this, even if CDB approved it, that that would just be delaying this further, and the college would have to take on more repairs until we got to that point.
Yeah. We could pay a lot of repairs for $200,000, though.
Well, I was shocked. I was really surprised, to be honest. I had no idea that they would come in that high.
My last thing is, I just, how was that $289,000 calculated? I couldn't come up with it from the numbers that are shown on the schedule.
It should be the construction bid minus the construction budget plus the 10% contingency.
Is it?
I hope so. Mary, did you check my math?
All right, Dwight, do you have a comment?
Yes, we've already got an engineer, and paid for the engineer on this project. And in my personal company business, we are dealing with price increases rapidly. And if we delay this project anymore to go back and try to rebid it, you're going to come back and find out if your bids are going to be higher than what you've got now. I think putting this off would be a very poor decision. I think you need to get it fixed, and you need to get it fixed before the prices go up even more.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's life.
I have a question for Mary as she's walking, as she's walking up. I assume we've already looked for any possible savings in the budget to try and cover it.
We have, and we have identified those. And as to the $290,000, that is the amount that we were given from CDB. We didn't do the math. We need an additional $290,000 to fund the project. But yes, we found a couple of different places. Chris and I worked together to find some... But yes, we found a couple of different places. Chris and I worked together to find some where we expect there will be budgets remaining that we can pull this from.
Have we always found that the Illinois math?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Kevin?
I, I was just going to ask if, if we've always found that the, uh, state of Illinois mathematics is always trustworthy.
Okay, any more useful comments? Okay.
Not, not for me.
Hold, hold on, please. Okay, is that David?
Waiting for the vote.
Okay, Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Now we'll move on to item P, president request to attend professional conference or event. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of, of questions, I guess. So on the, the trip to Houston, um, is that really necessary? Couldn't that be handled with, by a Zoom conference? We've done a lot of, uh, back and forth communications with them without going to Houston, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah. So that was considered. I have not had a chance to meet the CEO and president of HASC. And as you know, through discussions, um, we just went through quite a bit of, um, work with them to come to a settlement that the board approved last month because of some past invoices and a lack of a clear agreement. As we consider the work that we're doing with our West Center and really pulling in West to better align with our career and technical education programs, HASC may play a role in that because there are services that we do through HASC that are important. Uh, we actually do generate revenue. I felt it was important for me to actually meet this individual face-to-face, um, learn a little bit more about HASC, tour the facility, identify additional opportunities that may be accessible and available for Lewis and Clark as we grow our own, um, sort of opportunities with them before we make a decision whether or not we want to continue the partnership. Um, I think it's really important to meet the individual. We haven't really had a chance to do that, um, because of COVID and other barriers. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking for support to be able to meet this individual, look at what that connection is, look at what the opportunities are before bringing a, a proposal back to the board on whether or not we want to continue the relationship. So, um, it's more of a relationship.
Purchasing their services?
Building opportunity, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, sir?
Wouldn't we be purchasing their services? They're the vendor, right?
No, they're, no.
Oh, they're paying us?
No. Yeah, we, we get a percentage of what they offer. This is the safety, the safety training that we do through West. So this is a relationship that was established about five years ago. Um, and then obviously there were some disruptions because of COVID. We come, came out of that and there were some, you know, some, some gaps in terms of invoices, et cetera, that may or may not have been received. So we settled with them on that. And that took quite a bit of time to do. Um, we actually, on both sides, spent quite a bit of investment from legal counsel. So rather than, um, just saying, hey, we're not going to do this or we're going to do this, I think it's important to actually meet the other individual who runs that organization to really look at where there are opportunities between our, between our organizations. So I think it's a, a reasonable investment to make before we make a much larger investment going forward, so. Um, but, you know, certainly, uh, we'll, we'll do what the, the board wishes. So appreciate the consideration.
Any indication that maybe, uh, that CEO from Houston would come up here?
Yeah, um, that, that was also discussed. Um, you know, I reached out to him, um, first um, because, you know, we're getting close to trying to make some decisions here, um, with our workforce piece and sort of wrapping that in. Um, so I, you know, I, I'm taking the initiative, so I'm, I'm willing to sort of see if he wants to do that. But, you know, yeah, so. Uh, you know, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. I, I'm, yeah, so.
Julie, I, I think it would be a good business move. Go down and, and look around their offices and get to learn more about them. You need to, you need to learn as much as you can about them. You're not, if he comes up here, you're not going to learn a thing. Um, he's just going to learn about you. You're not going to learn about them.
Yeah.
And I think thirteen hundred and thirty dollars is some change for.
Yeah, and it's.
What potentially could be.
It'll probably be half of that, to be honest. But, you know, it's, you know, also, I, I don't, I don't have a clear understanding and familiarity with, with everything they do. And so I do want to go down and check out their facility and meet their individual, um, team members and just learn more about what, what opportunities might there be beyond even what we're doing to bring services and opportunities to Lewis and Clark.
Yeah, they're, they're not a brand new company.
Tell you, that trip is probably seven, six, seven hundred dollars with a hotel, um, I mean, one night. Fly down, fly back the next day.
Go ahead, Kevin.
That's all I, I, I think that's all I had to say on that. I think we, I think we know this company. We've been dealing with them for years.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we really necessarily need to familiarize ourselves with them all that much, but that's, that's just my opinion. Uh, my other, the other thing was on the, uh, the trip to Chicago, uh, you say you're, you're going to meet with, uh, I guess it's a potential donor or whatever up there. A Monticello alum?
That's, uh, following the ICCTA. Debbie, that hasn't been confirmed yet, but Debbie Edelman is working on an alumni event since I'm already going to be in Chicago. So it actually saves cost from having to go back, um, for that event. This is part of our alumni engagement plan that we've been working on for this last year. We have a number of alumni in the Chicagoland area, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, a great idea. Uh, was Dr. Chapman unavailable to go along?
I don't know. I haven't asked Dr. Chapman. I wa- I was going.
He is the executive director of the foundation.
Yeah. But I guess I would argue I'm the face of the institution and I'm trying to build relationships with our alumni to bring dollars into the institution. So I'm, I, you know, I'm happy to ask extended invitation to Dr. Chapman.
Okay, any more discussion? Call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Thank you.
Item Q, personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a real quick question on this one. Uh, we're having some pretty, uh, significant exits by Sheri Banovic and Christopher Green. Or, and it really doesn't matter about the significance of the, of them. Is it normal for us to do exit interviews with people that, uh, leave Lewis and Clark? Either resignations or retirements?
Gabe, do you want to handle that one?
We don't perform, um, formal exit interviews. We typically have an exit meeting with, um, anybody who do, does leave the college and that typically involves discussing future benefits. And if there are retirement issues, we try to counsel on retirement as best as possible, but we do not formal, uh, offer formal uh, qualitative exit interviews.
Do you have an opinion on, on, uh, the advisability of doing interviews like that? I mean, it's a fairly common practice.
Um, yes and no. I, I don't have strong feelings either way. Typically, um, in the case of, of conducting some of those more comprehensive and, uh, qualitative interviews, oftentimes depending on the situation, you sometimes get, um, what I might refer to as frivolous information that then leads to, um, a lot of college time and a lot of, uh, ultimately, uh, legal dollars spent to those, those effects. But I'm certainly not opposed to doing that. We've not done that in my tenure here. We've not done that, um, prior to my tenure here, as, as far as I know. Um, but yeah, you're, you're not wrong in the sense that it is a common practice at some, some institutions.
Okay, thanks, Gabe.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote? Barker?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Uh, now we'll move on to action items, amended policy three oh one.
Gabe, that's you again. So I've, um, individuals come up for the action items. If there are questions from the board, please, um, feel free to ask those individuals at the podium.
So I'll just quickly introduce this one. This, um.
Do, do we want to do the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Movements first? I, I don't know. Yes, okay. So, uh, David first?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Uh, just a, a quick introduction to this. This policy, uh, three oh one was brought to the board last month and a few suggested edits were requested to be made. So narrowing the scope to limiting six percent for staff, team members to, um, allow flexibility to the administration to allow for promotions. Um, and then I add, did add in that you can see, um, in the instance of interim, uh, internal appointments. So the example there I can provide here is that, um, we have had cases, especially recently, where, uh, full-time coaches have left and we've had the need to not leave student athletes without a coach. So we've appointed some interim coaches, um, in baseball, more recently basketball. In those cases, we typically are providing a monthly stipend, so that could lead to the potential for a six percent increase. So, um, this really is just a reflection of that, that request to narrow the scope last month. So I'll take any questions, so.
Okay, uh, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Um, item, uh, B, four B, amendment of policy five oh six, annual audit.
Mary?
Make, make the motion to approve.
I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All right, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item C, lease agreement with Illinois Humanities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Um, item D, renewal of Pride Incorporated, LCCC office lease agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Renewal of Riverbend Growth Association Office Lease Agreement.
Make the motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, after lots of seconds, uh, any discussion? All right, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, Trio Educational Opportunity Center lease. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a first.
And a second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, item G, rank and promotion committee recommendations. Do I have a, uh, motion to approve?
So move? Second?
Any discussion? Okay, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, item H, adjust compensation structure salary ranges. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I'm happy to take any questions if anybody would like, or I can provide a summary.
Unless you want to say something, I think we're good.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yep.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, item I, employee group insurance plans. I do have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Yes, sir, I have one comment. Good job.
All right, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. And on J, we got a revised piece on that, right? Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, did the people online get that? I don't know how much different it was. We have a piece of paper here on our desk, Kevin and David's. I don't know if you, are they aware of this or?
I don't think so, not at this point.
Okay, what, what changed from what?
It will be updated when Sue, um, when she and I talked, she was on her way out, so she's going to update it later. But what has changed is really the time of the meetings. Um, last year, we did not need this particular item because of how the calendar fell. So in bringing this action item forward, the time wasn't changed from seven to six.
Okay.
And therefore, the public hearing wasn't changed from six forty-five to five forty-five. That's all that's changed.
Okay. We didn't do a motion, right? Okay, um, so do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, call or roll? Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. All right, so let's start with our informational items, awarded grants and sponsored contracts.
And, um, Brett and, Brett and/or Nate are available online if there are any questions on A, B, C, or D. There is no LCFA update and Jessica Noble's available for F. And Jill Lane, Dr. Lane is available for G if there are any questions on that one. So, um, there is information in the packet. So again, informational, but please let me know if any of you have questions and we'll have those individuals provide that information.
I think that, um, on G, somebody needs to say that out loud.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Dr. Lane, thank you.
So it was my lucky day when Louise Jett asked me to present this item. Um, she is the editor in chief of The Bridge. And for several years in a row, our Lewis and Clark Bridge team, and that's the student newspaper, have, um, just swept the awards at the, um, ICCJA conference that's located at Eastern Illinois University. And as you can see from what's in the board book, they received eighteen awards. So I just want to say congratulations to these very talented students and congratulations to Louise Jett, who just runs a wonderful, um, um, department there at The Bridge. So let's give them a round of applause.
Hey, thank you for that. Um, leadership team reports to Dr. T. You can run that.
Yeah, sure. So, Dr. Lane, you're up again, sorry. And then Chris Paulda will present the operations, and then I'll take care of the athletics in my report.
Yeah, just a few quick updates. Um, so the Higher Learning Commission writing team is, is at work, and we're going to be working continuously on this project till we lock it in in March and prepare for our HLC visit in April of 2023. So again, thank you very much to all the members of that writing team. It's intensive work. We have to link, every word we say in our, um, assurance argument has to be linked to evidence that supports what we say. And so it is quite intensive work, and they're doing an excellent job. I also want to, um, congratulate Travis and Sue and the CBE welding program. We have, um, entered into an intergovernmental agreement with ICCB, and we are going to basically serve as giving technical assistance on CBE welding to other colleges in the state. It comes with a monetary award, and so I just think that that really shows that we are ahead of the pack in the state and leaders. We also have another college coming to visit us in a couple of weeks who want to tour the welding building to see how we do CBE. So it's been a team effort, and I would like to congratulate Travis and Sue and everybody else who's joined in on that effort. We submitted all of this year's five-year program reviews to the ICCB. It was nearly three hundred pages of, um, review of, I think, eighteen programs. A lot of faculty spent a lot of time working on those. They were presented to the academic affairs staff team. And as a result, we've just had our first curriculum change that was a result of that program review. So Sue, Dr. Sue Serwinski worked with, um, Jim Witt, who runs the program, and Paul Kibrik, who teaches in the program. And they, one of the issues that, that came out in their program review, I mean, it's good news, bad news. Students were getting jobs before they graduated, which is great for the students, not so great for our completion rates. And it, it really does benefit the students to actually have that degree. And so they streamlined the program, did a bunch of curriculum changes, and it's much easier. There were some barriers and obstacles, and so now it's much easier for those students to go ahead and complete and then get those jobs. Um, I, I know, uh, Dr. Sue Serwinski, I'm mentioning your name a lot tonight, but Sue is always busy and working hard. She's been working with, um, um, Edwardsville School District and with Tom Witten, who runs the Fab Lab in Edwardsville, and, and, um, they're, Tim Bell as well, and they're working on an intro to industrial arts class that would be held in the Fab Lab. It would be a two-part, year-long class, and those Edwardsville High students would come to the Fab Lab and get an introduction to everything they do in there. It, they would get high school credit and college credit. I think it's a great way to get those students interested in our career programs. So thanks to Sue and her team for working on that. And I think this leads us to additional potential partnerships with our high schools, and I know that, um, our Student Affairs Office is working on those relationships as well. So I think that those are going to be critical. Um, those are my primary updates, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jill?
Yeah.
Jill, regarding our, our HLC, regarding our HLC reaccreditation effort, or maybe it's not quite the terminology, but anyway, um, you're going to be retiring in August, sad to say. And, well, is there someone else that's actually steering that effort, or does it need to be transitioned to someone, or how, how's that going to work?
We've got a team. Um, I, I'm leaving. Dr. Sunblad is also leaving. Um, but we have a team assigned to each of the five sections of the HLC report, and Dr. Dennis Krebe is the liaison to the HLC. So the work will still get done. Most of Criterion Four, which is, I was the writing lead along with Deanna Massey, a faculty member, um, much of that work is done. Um, we've got, a lot of evidence needs to be added, but we'll, we'll, it'll get done and we'll be fine. Lots of talented folks on that team. They can do it without me. And thank you, Kevin, for announcing my retirement to the whole room when I
Well, we already covered in, uh, item, uh, item Q.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, it's in there.
I didn't even see that. Okay, well, um, all right. Any other questions? All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dr. Lane. Um, one backup, if we could do a quick backup, is, um, Jessica Noble wanted to talk on item F under informational. So, yeah, it's a pretty neat project she'll talk you through. So, Jessica, if you're there, go ahead.
Are you guys hearing anything?
Maybe we could come back to her. You want to do that?
I'm sorry, is it, was it me? I apologize. Jessica Noble? Is that who you guys called?
Yes, Jessica, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. My son's crying upstairs. I was running up the stairs. Um, so I wanted to tell you guys about a very special project that I was working on and is going to come to fruition on Thursday, um, at 12:30. I wanted to invite everyone, um, from the board. So about two years ago, I found out about two Monticello alumni that had been murdered in 1969. Their case is still cold to this day, which makes it fifty-two years. They were murdered, um, on Memorial Weekend. They were traveling from Somerset, New Jersey, back to, um, a graduation ceremony. One student had, um, both students, I'm going to give you guys a little bit of background about them. Um, Elizabeth Perry and Susan, Susan Davis were murdered along the Garden State Parkway. Um, the two women had been vacationing in Ocean City and were headed back to attend a college graduation. It is suspected that a hitchhiker is responsible for the crime, but no one has ever been linked to the case through physical evidence. So this case is still considered in an active investigation. Um, I found out about this case actually through a, a true crime podcast, and I decided that my students would really benefit from doing a service project for these two young women that were murdered. Um, as you might know, crime victims are usually the last people that are considered in a case. It's usually the perpetrator that everyone talks about. Everyone likes to talk about serial killers and, you know, different people that do different things, but really it is about the victims of crime and their families. So what we've decided to do was, I applied for two grants. One from the Region 45 of the Illinois Education Association, which is the, our region for our union. And also, um, I was awarded a grant from the Illinois Education Association Southwestern Chapter of Retirees. And I was able to purchase a tree and a few bushes that will go around it. And then my colleague Travis Jumper and his students built a bench for me, um, or for my project, our project, and, um, it's actually sitting outside of Haskell Hall right now. It's, um, ready to go for the ceremony on Thursday. And, um, we are going to have it powder coated. Um, we're in the process of choosing the color. Those students will get to talk about that on Thursday. And pretty much, we want to dedicate and have a place for people to remember them. So, um, I just wanted you guys to know about this. Um, I want to thank a lot of LC people for helping me. Um, Greg Cash, Debbie Edelman, Liz Burns, Travis Jumper, um, and some other colleagues that helped along the way, Katie Piper, Ethan Brash. There's a lot of people. Dr. T, thank you for believing in the project, and thank you for the Illinois Education Association for granting me the money to help my students, um, do this service project. And we're really, really excited about it. So I just wanted to tell everyone, it's an honor to be able to create something that will remember these two young women for their time at our college, and it is potentially possible that their case will never be solved. And, um, I wanted, we wanted something that would be memorable for them. So thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. Okay, um...
Chris will do operations.
I just have a few more updates, um, to share. The main complex foundation repair project is wrapping up in about two weeks. Um, even with the weather, they're still finishing early than anticipated and estimated. Um, so we will be rid of that orange fencing around the complex eventually. Um, with the main complex renovation negotiations between CDB and the architectural firm who was awarded the contract, uh, or to be, uh, to execute into a contract is, uh, the firm Hastings and Chivetta. Uh, those continue, and then later this month, we're going to have an introductory meeting, uh, with that firm. Uh, I also wanted to mention with the insurance renewals that were approved tonight, those saw a five percent decrease in cost, even though we did not lower any of the coverage levels. So that was pretty exciting to hear, because that's not very common. Um, and then also, I wanted to mention that facilities and Sustainability Office have really started working closely together to focus on realizing energy efficiencies. Uh, anytime equipment is, uh, needing to be replaced or upgraded, we're, um, working to find funds to cover these smaller projects, and then also, um, to find the funding outside of our operations budget through grants and such. Um, we also have a meeting with Ameren tomorrow, and that is another avenue of where we can find some more funding for improving our efficiencies on campus. And then if you drove through campus, uh, anytime today, you will, might have noticed that the annual plantings are in the beds now, and, uh, I actually saw Katie, oh my gosh, Katie was all red in the face, and you'd tell she's been outside working all day, but she was out there watering her plants. So, um, they really look nice. The tulips are out and the annuals are in, so I feel like we're reaching towards the end of spring at this point. Um, but that's really all I needed to share. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Chris. So, so I will start off, and I, I know, Dr. Lane, you weren't expecting this, and sort of Kevin sold the thunder, but I wanted to read off a little bit about Jill's time here at the college, and, um, certainly will be missed, but I think as most of those individuals who've, who've retired or moved on, they come back and teach or help us out. So maybe Dr. Lane will consider that. So she started with Lewis and Clark in 2005 as an assistant professor in liberal arts. Um, in the stories I hear, she was a pretty darn good instructor. June 1st, 2008, became dean of business and liberal arts. June 5th, 2015, dean of transfer programs. June 1st of 2020, interim chief academic officer, and then in February of 16, 2021, the chief academic officer. So I, I haven't had a chance to work with Dr. Lane as long as I'd like, but I do want to thank her for her service, and I know she'll be missed, and, uh, she's here through the summer, so we will have some sort of better going away party for her. But just thank you, Dr. Lane, and, um, all the very best to you. So I'll, I'll start off with, with athletics. We have Cody Zitman, who's been our interim athletic director, um, for the last couple of weeks, and, um, has been really doing a great job. Um, worked with him earlier this week to rewrite our coaching job descriptions, and we'll be posting, um, job, or jobs for, uh, for baseball, basketball, and women's soccer. Those will be part-time positions. The agreement is that all coaching positions will have a base of fifty percent, um, you know, so there's consistency across the board. Cody's also done a good job of bringing the full coaching team together. I had met with the coaches about three or so weeks ago, um, really as a prompt to kind of reignite the culture and focus of athletics as being an enrollment driver, but also, um, I think as Cody has put it more eloquently than me, that athletics can really help drive the inclusive culture that we're trying to create on campus. Um, so he's done a really good job with that, and athletics is moving forward. So we'll, um, we'll begin sort of the search for those part-time coaches, um, hopefully in the next week or so. Um, and then in terms of, of mine, so we have, and the board knows this, but, uh, we have a board retreat coming up next week, which I'm really looking forward to. It's an opportunity for us as a team, as a board, to really set priorities, um, kind of work on building a more collaborative spirit across, uh, our, our own, um, team as a board and as, as an administration. So looking forward to that opportunity. Dr. Jim Reed, uh, who works at ICCB, will help facilitate that session, and that will happen next, next week. So one of the things, I wanted to mention this as well, that, that I talked about today at our all-team meeting, is really taking the summer, um, as a team to step back. I think one of the things that's sometimes difficult for leaders, um, and very difficult for me, because I'm, I'm always wanting to move forward, um, is just to step back and evaluate what's happened this last year, um, the really positive changes that have occurred, um, our willingness to embrace the bumps that we've all endured over this last year, but then come back in August, you know, stronger and more focused on moving forward with a strategic plan that will be, um, brought to the board, um, in July, or I'm sorry, in June, for sort of a reaffirmation. Uh, we actually have two sessions coming up, one tomorrow, and one on the 26th, where we'll be sort of reintroducing it to our campus team, and of course, seeking participation across each of our four key directions and the aspiration mover teams that are underpinning those key directions. Um, and then, of course, I'll spend some time next week with our board, kind of walking through the changes and just sort of, you know, guiding everyone through the plan for the next three years, um, with what some of the expectations will be in terms of presenting to the community, presenting to the all-campus team, and presenting to the board essentially on a quarterly basis, having some opportunities to measure progress, and, you know, have perhaps some deep discussions around where and why and how we may not be performing at the level we should. So I think there's lots of opportunities ahead of us. Um, so that's, that's it for me. I wanted to keep it short, but just again, thank everyone for getting us through another year. Graduation is next week. I think a culmination of all of our good work, but we'll see students coming across stage, uh, celebrating, uh, an amazing achievement. That couldn't have happened without the support that everybody in this room provides, and everybody online provides, and everybody who's not here this evening that's somehow, some way, shape, or form associated with Lewis and Clark provides. So thank you, everyone, for your great work, and, uh, let's keep moving forward.
What's the weather forecast for graduation? Does anybody know? All right, so, um, next item on the agenda is to adjourn to closed session. Now, there'll be no action taken during closed session, but the board will return to open session to take action and formally close the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Yes.
Wertz?
Yep.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Thirty percent chance of rain. Guess will be transferred over to the closed session?
Who's tut?
Can you hear us now?
I can.
You can? Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I can hear you.
Okay, just a minute. What's tut?
Can you hear me ask who tut is?
I have no idea.
They're in the meeting, right?
Yes.
That's loud. Okay, so what am I supposed to say?
Well, you could just say, no further business, the meeting's adjourned.
No further business, meeting's adjourned.
Okay, 10-0-2. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.